So I'll call the meeting to order. This is the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, February 16th. Happy Mardi Gras, everyone, 2021. We are meeting via Zoom conference line and we're starting at 6:00 PM. Let's start with approval of orders. They are here in the Select Board Room. I will review and sign after I'm finished here. And they will be available for Select Board members to sign in the Town Clerks and Treasurers Office. So please do remember to stop by and take care of those. First item of business is the approval of the Select Board Minutes for February 2nd, 2021.
Move to approve.
JP, move to approve. Sharon seconded the motion. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, next item of the agenda, it would be the time we take public comment or questions from the floor. And again, this is limited to folks who are not already on the agenda. So anyone wish to be recognized for public comment or questions if you're not on the agenda?
Jim Schultz here.
Okay, Jim.
So we discussed a meeting or two ago, the tax sales that will be happening on March 23rd. And the request has been made by the lawyer to hold those at the Town Hall. And so I talked a little with Bill Sweet today and we felt a discussion here, especially with John Paul, about the COVID issues and how we might be able to do this.
And I'm assuming you're talking physically in person as opposed to a Zoom-type meeting?
That is correct. What we're looking, what Bill Sweet and I were kind of discussing is limit the folks who are there physically to those who are qualified to bid on the properties. And then to open up, at the same time, open up the conference call line that Bill says the town has. And anybody from the public who wanted to join in and, you know, participate as far as listening to what's going on in that would be able to do so. That would leave us not having an issue with not making it public, so to speak.
That building can't accommodate a crowd like that, Jim, and meet the COVID requirements.
Okay, the expected crowd for something like that is going to be a very small one, maybe half dozen people. Is the room downstairs large enough for that?
No, it's not. You can fit, I think, four people, four and a half people in the Select Board and four people or less than four downstairs.
Okay.
But you don't, you don't know how many people are going to show up. I mean, you could end up with a room full.
They, as far as people, we would put in the announcement that people would have to register ahead of time to be part of this and that they would have to be qualified to bid. At this point in discussions and that, the size of the crowds for these have been relatively small. But yes, I understand all of those. If, and that's why I wanted to bring it up here at this meeting, to see what your opinion on all of it is.
I mean, conceivably, you could have it in the parking lot.
Yep, hopefully the weather would not be like it was yesterday, but...
Right? But these, these also don't take very long.
No, they do not. And as a matter of fact, of the three properties that I talked about before, there's a good possibility that one of the lien holders has been in contact with myself and maybe paying that one off. So there may only be two actually going up to auction. So we'll see what happens there, too.
All right. So I think what I'm hearing is that we don't have the capability of having in-person inside tax sale for you, but we can make our parking lot available to you.
Okay.
Is that the consensus of the other board members?
Yes.
I wonder why we can't do it on Zoom?
I'm not sure what the complications to that would be in the sense of people not necessarily being able to get in on Zoom or having other issues if for, this is relative to the people who are qualified to bid. And, you know, these things are usually done in person, almost always. There really isn't anything set up, like an auction house may have bidding online, but they've set up a bunch of precautions, should I say, to make sure that people are not excluded. I don't know if we could, we could prove ourselves to being able to do that.
Well, I think where it stands is you can use our parking lot. And if you, JP?
Yes.
Sorry, your box lit up, so I thought you wanted to say something. Okay, I guess not. So it appears, Jim, that we can offer you the exterior parking lot. We can't offer you interior, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thanks for bringing it up. Anybody else under public comment or questions? All right, let's move on. Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board.
Good evening.
Hi, Bill.
So few things in the packet to go over. We have the current meeting schedule and agenda items. Not much has changed. I don't think there's anything drastic for the committees need to go on or come off. I will need a building committee meeting, but we can do it after the election. We make new committee assignments, that will be fine. Number two is a appropriation request sent very recently from Brock Community Action. They did not get the appropriation to us in a timely fashion to have it included on the ballot or make it in the town report. So they sent it late and asked that the board consider it separately if they wanted to fund it independently. So that's for when to discuss. Number three is from Byron. We talked about the last meeting, the certificate of highway mileage to be approved. Number four is under new business. It's a scholarship application and award letter for discussion. Number five is the 2021 Solid Waste Alliance Community Appointment Letter for the Representatives. We could discuss that one. Number six is a updated draft policy for the signs being posted on town-owned land. So we've got some more to discuss on that. Number seven is information from VLCT on grants and scholarships that are available through them for training opportunities and some purchasing of equipment, some different options in there for departments to be able to get some funding for different things. Number eight is for the board to review independently for something else for a project later on. And number nine is information that we got from the state of Vermont that says they've seen some additional permit requests for helipads and airstrips on personal property. So while I haven't seen any come through here yet, they asked to be sent out to everybody to, to see if it's more of informational at this point. We don't have any pending requests for helipads or airstrips. That is everything in the packet. Did you have any questions on anything in the, before we go on to the other couple of things?
Well, let's just take the, the last one, the Transportation Board, helipads and airstrips. Does Barbara have this?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. So I think any request would go to the Planning Commission.
Well, it's, it's not so much a matter of having a pending application and then doing something. If an application comes in and you don't have anything in place yet, whether it's in the town plan or in any kind of a bylaw, then this letter essentially states that they don't have to do a municipal review, that they don't have anything to work with there. So it skips right over municipal review. It might skip over neighborhood concerns. A lot of these, I guess, are going into, they're for single people or, you know, single individuals, a single home, and they're going into subdivisions that are already existing. And in some cases, the people are being caught unaware.
Okay. So can we send this to the Planning Commission to see if we ought to adopt? Apparently, we could also do a standalone ordinance if we wished, but I thought we had something related to the airport, and maybe it's the existing airport in our municipal plant, so...
Yeah, I think it's the flyway to the airport, yeah.
Okay. So I'd appreciate it if the Town Planning Commission would take a look at this and make a recommend to us. Okay, thank you, Barbara. All right. So that's what Bill has presented. We'll hold on some of these things because I think they're on, under new business. So anything else for us, Bill?
Yep, I had just a couple of things. I sent out an email to the board earlier this afternoon. Just one additional thing came out, which was an appointment request from Regional Ambulance for the, for a new representative. It's a three-year appointment and they are asking for that. So everybody, all the board members have that information in their email for that appointment request. I had also, after the last meeting, Mary had asked me, I sent out a message to all the department heads about coming up with any topics for the goals for this coming year. I got feedback from one board member, but I haven't heard, I haven't gotten anything back from department heads, but they wanted to bring it up in their topic. I have a note ready for that. You have the Public Utility Commission petition from T-Mall organizers and that's to Energy Committee. And just wanted to remind all the department heads for employees that we have, we do have that, the EAP benefit, the Employee Assistance Program benefit through the state. It helps with a variety of things. So if any, anybody's has the employees that, that need information on that or want information on it, I do have that available in my office for them to take, and there's no charge for it. So it's a great benefit.
Yes, it is. Thank you very much. So, all right, the Regional Ambulance Service, I suggest we wait, we traditionally do a bunch of appointments after our reorganizational meeting, after the town meeting. So I suggest we wait on that one. Is that okay with other folks on the Select Board?
Maybe we take it up at our next meeting, see how it rolls.
Okay, all right. Next, the, I think we also had a correspondence from SWAC in here, asking for appointments for a representative and alternate, that would be for the period beginning April 15th. So it looks like we also have time to bring that up after our reorganizational meeting. Is that okay with folks?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay. The, I think Bill touched on, and I've already given it back to him. The, it looked like a minor request for telecommunications upgrades at the water tower at Mill Village Chapel area. And I've asked JP to take a look at that on behalf of the Energy Committee. And I say minor because it didn't look like, at a very quick glance, it was going to increase the size of anything more than 10 feet either way. So I think that takes care of that for the time being. Thank you, JP. And I think the others, we will, well, let's take, Brock has requested, again, they, their letter is dated December 10th, 2020, but Bill didn't actually receive it until just a few days ago, I think, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And of course, it's too late to put it on our ballot. Our ballots are already printed and back here. So what's your pleasure with this? Brock is requesting an appropriation for $975. It's too late to get on the ballot. We haven't budgeted anything, so...
I really don't think there's anything we can do for them. It wouldn't be fair to all of those other folks that did meet the deadline.
Yeah, okay.
I agree.
Okay, so we will take, take this and receive it on the record then. Thank you, folks. Okay, so let's move on then. Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Hi there. Not much to report this tonight. Just a reminder, if anyone wants to get an absentee ballot mailed to them, they need to call the office as soon as possible so we can get those out to voters. That's all I have tonight.
A question, Carrie. If somebody wanted to vote here at the town office prior to town meeting, is that allowed now or no?
Well, that's a good question because I have a limit of how many people can be in the office. So my first inkling is to say no, but then again, that is restricting people from their right to vote, so I don't want to do that. So I guess that's up for discussion if you want to talk about that. But I'm more than happy to bring or send absentee ballots to them if they wish instead, if it comes down to that they can't come into the office.
Okay. If people can still call and make an appointment to do business with the town clerk, correct?
Correct.
So if their business included wanting to vote in person, vote here early, that would be a legitimate request?
I'm going to add that if they do make an appointment, they need to go through a series of questions about COVID, and I can only allow one voter in at a time.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Carrie. Questions of Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer. JP?
All set.
Thank you. All right, Barbara Neus-Pulling, Town Planning Commission.
Okay, good evening. We, there were a couple of things I mentioned in the last meeting, a couple of projects that we'll be looking at in a little more detail this Thursday night. One of them is a subdivision with the Thomas family and Velco at Post Road and US Route 7 North. So they're working through the permit application process right now and we'll be going through that and probably will have some questions of them on Thursday. And then we have the rather large housing project proposal on Dyer Road at the intersection of Dyer and Middle Roads, near the John Deere dealership there. So they're looking at 260 units there, combination of one and two bedroom only. Their usual clients are young professionals or empty nesters. And they say they have some pretty nice amenities, fitness center, movie theater, coffee bar, an outdoor saltwater pool, community garden, tennis court, electric car charging, et cetera, et cetera. So lots of units, but they seem at, we just have a preliminary map. We'll have a presentation by the developer Thursday, but it looks like most of the development will be in close to both Dyer and Middle Roads. And then, I'm not sure how many acres, but most of the parcels they're buying, north to the bypass and west to Otter Creek, is going to be open land, maybe some walking trails in there. So a vast majority of, of the acreage that they're buying, they say is going to be open land. And the apartment buildings will be congregated in one, one smaller area. So we'll find out more on Thursday night. And yeah, this is Act 250, so there's not much we can do with this. We can ask a few questions, but this is definitely going to Act 250.
Well, both the Planning Commission and the Select Board have Act 250 status, so, and if people want to sit in, so to speak, on the presentation Thursday night, the information for your meeting is on the website and they can join by Zoom, right?
Yes, and it's, it's a different access code for the Planning Commission. So it's not the same as the Select Boards.
Okay, so check...
Barbara, how many units was that again, please?
260.
Two-six-zero?
Two-six-zero. Yep, and 1-4-0, one-bedroom units, and 1-2-0, two-bedroom units.
Yep, okay, thank you.
This is huge.
It's really a metropolitan concept, metropolitan housing concept, where they try to make it all-inclusive for the residents in terms of recreation, a gym and stuff like that. It's interesting that they'd be doing it here.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the company is John Flatley Company out of, it's out of Massachusetts, Canton, Massachusetts.
Okay, and I'm sure we'll hear much more about it in coming weeks and months. Anything else, Barbara?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from Select Board members? Okay, moving on then to Mike Rowe, Town Recreation Director. I see that you were able to join us. I'm glad.
I am, thank you. I don't have much, just we're running a K2 basketball camp this week at school and it's very successful. We're spread out in the building, kids are having a great time. And we'll hope to start a couple of rec games in the next week or two, obviously following all the guidelines that need to be followed, but that's a plus that the kids are getting to play and they're getting out and doing things. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Other than that, I don't have much.
Okay. Questions for Mike Rowe from Select Board members? Okay, thank you, Mike. Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
Good evening, Mary.
Good evening, Byron.
Nothing really big to, because everything's on the agenda, the certificate of highway mileage and so forth, so we can talk to that when you get to it. The only thing I wanted to advise you of, as you've probably been aware of, we've had, you know, severe weather from South Texas all the way up through the Mississippi, Ohio Valleys into the Northeast. And typically, when you get a weather pattern like that, salt ends up being in short supply, only because those very southern states typically don't put up a lot of salt, if any at all. They just kind of ride out the winter. And right now, so they, if they do get a bad situation like we have now, they're willing to pay spot price for, for salt. So any of the salt companies, they take advantage of that as much as they can and ship as much as they can down into that area before anything melts off. And the spot price down there is probably anywhere from $150 to $160 more than what we pay. So my concern, I called the salt company today just to be sure that we were still going to be adequately supplied here in the Northeast. And yes, we were still adequately supplied even though they're shipping stuff into the southern part of the country.
Okay.
Other than that, we're in good shape. We'll keep an eye on the roads tonight. We may get some flurries later in the evening and, you know, we may have to touch things up in the morning.
Since we have, and thank you for checking on the salt supply. I appreciate that. Just keep in mind that one of the, on the wish list, and I think on your five-year plan, is to discuss and possibly move ahead on building a salt shed so we can purchase salt in advance and store it appropriately.
That's correct, Mary. I did apply for a grant, but was turned down on that.
Right.
If those grants come up again, we'll just apply again and see if we can keep the project moving along that way.
Okay, thank you. Let's take up the certificate of highway mileage, as long as you're right here. So this is item number three in your packet.
Yep. A lot of that was brought to me, attention to that was brought to me by Howard and through the E911 people. They were confused to see that on the highway map, there was a small section of Class 3 road nestled or sandwiched in between two Class 4 sections. And somehow I've missed that. And, but anyways, I did physically go up and measure everything. The mileages on, on the state highway map are correct. There are no changes as far as the mileages are concerned. However, there is a section of Corteline Road from Boardman Hill to the end of the pavement near Pete Villan's driveway that is still listed on the state highway map as Class 4. Now, this road was upgraded and should have been upgraded to Class 3 back in the late 80s, early 90s when Marshall did that project. And I don't know how it got missed, but anyways, I've had conversations with Sarah Moulton, who was the, one of the GIS technicians there at V-Trans. And she just wants to get the mapping squared away. And, and she said, do change your certificate of highway mileage. So I hope you've got the updated certificate that shows those changes. And that will upgrade our, our Class 3 mileage slightly by about a half a mile, which will bump up our state aid by, I don't know, $1,000 maybe.
Okay, so this is...
That's why you're seeing those changes.
Okay, Town Highway number 24.
Correct.
Okay, and this is .58 miles, so just over half a mile, okay.
That's correct.
And we had changed the classification a long time ago, so we don't have to do anything about changing it, right?
No, I don't know if the classification was changed or not. Obviously, V-Trans, if it, if it was, V-Trans didn't get the notification of it. That's why we need to go back into, and I've asked Carrie to go back into, the certificates of highway mileage, probably in that 1986 to 1990 time period, and see if on that certificate, Town Highway 24, Corteline Road, shows up. If it doesn't, then we may have to go through a process.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm still, you know, I, I told Sarah we would, we would look for those things, and if we can send that on to her, then we're all in good shape. She was going to try to access their archives, but she said it would be later this week before she could do that.
Okay.
So that is, that's in the process.
We've been maintaining and obviously plowing this and...
Yeah, it was all widened out and, you know, properly ditched and paved and all that sort of thing quite a number of years ago.
Yeah, okay.
Whether the government or what happened, I don't know.
I would entertain a motion to accept the certificate of highway mileage and to authorize me to sign on behalf of the Select Board. and to authorize me to sign on behalf of the Select Board.
Shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is Aaron, did you, yes, Aaron seconded?
Yes, I did, yep.
Motion made by Sharon, seconded by Aaron. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in.
Mary, can we sign it yet until we find out if there's more to add to it? I'm a little lost here.
No, there isn't any more to add to it. That is the certificate and that's what our state aid will be based on, Karen.
Okay.
And the only thing we're trying to find is that certificate of highway mileage from way back when that would confirm that that is, that should be a Class 3 section and not Class 4 on the Town Highway map.
Okay, okay. All right. Are you ready for the question? If so, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so I'm signing that, the ayes have it.
That certificate, Mary, also has a place on it for the town clerk to sign off on. And then that needs to be forwarded to Sarah Moulton.
Okay, so I'm going to.
Before the twentieth of February.
Put it in the folder here for Bill and I'll let Bill take care of that part. Okay, thank you, Byron.
Okay. Any questions?
Okay. And moving along, any questions, Byron? And I'm not seeing any, so thank you, Byron, appreciate it. Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Again, not much to report. Just a few fire calls over the last two weeks, one big one last week. I would, if you have time, I'd like to have a little executive session for a little personnel matter after your meeting or.
Okay. So scribble a note here. Yes, and I'd also like to have a separate executive session on a personnel matter. So we're going to have two after our general meetings, if we could, if the board agrees. So thank you, thank you, Chris, to all of the firefighters who helped with the, I think it was the Brilia House, north of town.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, quite a long, hard day. Any questions of the fire chief?
No, but Scott Brilia approached me and said how kind our fire department was to him as he was pretty shook up. And I'm sure they've dealt with people who are pretty shook up. But he said his, he had a gun safe in the basement and he didn't know how he was going to get it out. And our fire department helped him a couple of days later. So, you know, you did a good job, chief. And, you know, it's nice to hear good things about your folks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
Evening, everybody. So first is calls for service. We had a total of thirty-four this last period. We have switched over to, as last time we switched over to ValCor. We have a prettier, I guess, file, I'll send to you guys at some point. I was going to do it today, but I got tied up in something else. Usual calls for service, nothing stands out that much. If you have any questions on, just let me know. The other thing is, we had the police committee meeting. Mary, you want me to go over just some of the things I want to bring up and that? You can add to it.
Yes, please.
Okay, so we talked about update on the search for new officer. And we requested to get a full-time certified Level 3 officer that we offer up to five thousand dollars in incentive to come to our department. And then we talked about language, maybe the town attorney could drop for us, that it'd be a two to three-year commitment if they accept that position. So that would be, I guess, a question with the Select Board authorized us to spend up to five thousand dollars on this current budget to cover, to get incentive for another officer to come to our department. And we have, currently, we're not spending Officer Gambell's line item. And with this, in the part-time officer, we have, and also with the cruiser money that we don't need to spend, that was reimbursement for my car and it's paid for now. The total was like forty-one thousand dollars. So we do have plenty of money in the budget to make this offer of five thousand dollars for a full-time person to come to our department.
Move to approve.
Second. So the motion's made by JP, seconded by Aaron, to offer a sign-in bonus of up to five thousand dollars. And again, that would come out of this year's, the current year's budget, because we anticipate a significant surplus. Any further discussion? I will say the police committee met and decided this was a good idea. If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Okay, anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Chief, you also had another item concerning a new cruiser.
Yes, so we're in the process of replacing one of our cruisers and we, we're going to take it out of the depreciation fund. So Deputy Chief Wasserman has called around and the best price we have right now through the state bid to Ford is for their cruiser is thirty-six thousand nine fifty-eight. Then we also called the local Dodge dealer and he called the state bid for Dodges and for their pursuit-rated train hosts. The prices are within four hundred dollars of each other. The big difference between the Dodge and the Ford is the Ford, we can get it within ninety days and the Dodge is anywhere from five to six months. So we'd rather get it sooner rather than later. So we opted for the Ford. We got approval by the police committee, but looking to the authorization to spend this money, thirty-six thousand nine fifty-eight from the Select Board. We also are, this is available for the lease, so rather than draining the depreciation fund completely, we probably do the three-year lease program to the Ford dealership as well.
Okay, so the other, remember, this was the state bid price with Ford. The local Dodge dealer, excuse me, the, yes, the local Dodge dealer quoted a price that was about four hundred dollars lower, but they were the ones who said it would be a five to six-month wait, correct?
Correct.
And then there was a Burlington Dodge dealer that was contacted and their bid was forty-two thousand six forty, which put them way above the other two.
Yes.
So the committee felt that it was appropriate to go with the Ford dealer, even though it was four hundred dollars more roughly, because they could deliver it much sooner.
Move to approve.
JP's moved to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Sharon, seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Motion carries, so we're purchasing a new Ford SUV Cruiser. And with the details of financing, I'm sorry, some of the, paying over three payments and tapping the equipment fund and going with a three-year lease, so. Okay, anything further, chief?
Well, I have on my plate, if you have any questions for me, I'll try to answer them.
Okay. And Select Board have any questions? All right, if not, we'll move along. John Paul Fagin, Town Health Officer.
Nothing new to report.
Okay, thank you.
We do, I will be involved in the discussion, the executive session discussion with Chief Clark.
Okay. And committee meeting updates. You've just heard the update of the police committee, which was held just before this meeting. Did any other committees meet? Okay. The project list, now it's still here, but I, we have requested that department heads get their, and Select Board members get their projects that they would like to see happen, or at least start for 2021. Get those in and we will consider it at our Select Board meeting after town meeting. So please, if you have some ideas, department heads, Select Board members, please get them into Bill. Okay, under new business, A, Board to Discuss Reviewing the Town Ordinance and Policy Binders. Approximately nine, eight or nine years ago, I think I volunteered to take a look at the Town Ordinance and Policy Binders and got around to it last week with Bill. And what, what it is, is a collection, first of all, of ordinances that we have, everything from, I guess, the Panhandling Ordinance, which we have since withdrawn. And there's a Peddler's Ordinance and there's a variety of other ordinances that really haven't been looked at for a long time. And on the policy part, these are policies that have been adopted by the Select Board for various things, such as, you know, employee handbook, employee personnel handbook. There's just a wide variety of things, most of which, most of these policies relate to one department or another. So this is not only not a one-person job, but it shouldn't be a one-person job. So what I talked with Bill about is having him go through these ordinances and policies and get copies distributed among the department heads to take a look and see if any of these need upgrading or significant amendment, or whether they're fine and we should just continue using them. This is not anything we're obviously going to do tonight and this is going to be a longer range. Let's take a look and let's bring these things up to date, please. So Bill, if you could be so kind as to start distributing, that would be the purpose for which people would be getting copies of these ordinances and policies. So any questions about that? Anybody disagree that it's probably time to take a look at this? Okay, so let's move in that direction then, thank you. All right, in your packet, and we had this issue come up last meeting. This is new business item B. Do we wish to establish a policy for campaign signs on town-owned property? And if you look at item number six in your packet, that is what a draft policy would look like. I think Bill put in there, since the last time we saw a draft, he added all of the town-owned property that we do have and reflected some of the, well, some of the, I guess, customs that have happened. But what's your pleasure with this? People have started putting up campaign signs, we've seen some of them around. This would not affect any private property. So people, of course, are free to put up campaign signs in their front yards. Just please keep them back from the town right of way. I had one of mine hit by the snow plowing activity, I've got to go put it back up. So what's your pleasure on this? John Paul?
I've had, I've had a lot of folks comment to how terrible town properties look this time of year. I do think it's something we should consider, but I don't think it would be fair to think about imposing it this year but for the next election if the board, you know, did want to, did want to approve it.
I agree with John. I wouldn't want to do it for this one, but I think we need to do something as it does look a little bit. John Carity.
Okay. Aaron?
I would agree with you, probably during an election isn't the best time to implement a policy. From the way that it's written, though, it doesn't seem like it, you know, it's not restrictive really, but it, you know, just makes sure that it isn't complete chaos. So if we could bring it up another time, probably best.
Okay. So maybe what we should do, and tell me, well, I'll entertain a motion to table this so that it is, there is a reminder and we, when we wish to take it up again, we can.
So move.
Motion made by JP, seconded by Sharon. All in favor of tabling, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, you have tabled the discussion of the campaign signs on town property. Item C, the Board to Review the Agreement for the Town Emergency Management Director Personal Vehicle Use. And I note that Marty Wasserman is here and John Paul.
That's on the agenda, my request. The town has previously approved agreements with those employees that use their personal vehicles in the town business. And unfortunately, we left the emergency manager out of that. And I wanted to urge my fellow board members that we give Marty the same agreement that we have in place for the other town employees. So I put that in the form of a motion and we could just get the agreement out and fill in the blanks.
Second.
Okay, motion is made in, made by John Paul, seconded by Sharon, to extend to Marty Wasserman, who is our Town Emergency Management Director, the same policy for personal vehicle use. Any discussion? If not, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on to, in your packet, the Scholarship Information from Applicant, which is packet number four, and the Award Letter, which is packet four A. You may recall that we had in earlier, I guess, no, last year, we had addressed the issue of a person who had had a Rutland Town Scholarship and came in late for an appropriation. And we discussed, because we turn funds back in that are not used, we didn't have the money from, to pay. So we thought it would be wiser to remind both people who are applying for and people who receive town scholarships that this is a scholarship that will be paid in two parts, if they win, paid in two parts for their first year of college and paid for the first semester and the second semester. And I think the rewrites that Bill and I talked about, and I sent this over to Sharon as well, I think that fairly clearly sets out that, and I'll quote, "Funds not claimed after one year from the award date are forfeited." And funds will be dispersed to the recipient directly. If you do not attend or claim the award for either semester, the funds are forfeited. So if, John Paul? Sorry, thought you had your hand raised. We are about to post these on the website so that our students can start applying for scholarships. The deadline is Friday, April twenty-third at noon, so there's plenty of time. But we wanted to make those changes. Sharon, you're all set with the changes made?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, all right. So I don't think we need a motion on that, it was just some language change. But unless there's further discussion to be had, we'll ask Bill to make those applications available and ask Carrie to adopt the letter with that small change in it. in it. Okay. That takes care of E. And, let's see. There's a couple of things. Item number seven in the pack, the packet, as Bill mentioned, was money that is available from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns for such things as sewer line inspection cameras, Byron, leadership training for law enforcement supervisors, IT consultation services for digital security, and equity and diversity training courses that we might be able to provide, similar to the one we did a few years ago for the, at the fire station for all of our employees. So there are total of $7,500 per municipality for some of these items. So department heads do take a look, and if there's something that appeals, please do let us know, and we'll move along with applying for some of those grants. Okay. We have anything else that I've missed? Bill?
I don't see anything.
All right. So before we go into executive session, is there any other business to be brought before the Select Board? Sharon?
Nope.
JP?
All set.
Aaron?
Nothing here. Thank you.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to go into executive session, first, on a fire department matter, which I believe is a personnel matter, and secondly, for another personnel matter not related to the fire department.
Shall move.
Second.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded to go into executive session for two personnel matters. And we'll start with the fire chief on the first one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, well, in executive session. Bill?
As the Board of Health, the first motion would be that the firemen not be required to be vaccinated as long as the members follow the protocols as outlined by the chief.
Exactly.
I would make that, thank you.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. JP and Sharon respectively concerning, as the Board of Health, concerning the vaccination and the protocols that the chief will provide, and so that those who are not vaccinated against COVID-19, if they follow the protocols, there is a way for them to continue participating in department functions. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any discussion of this? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. JP, a second motion?
So my second motion is that, having in mind that this is Byron's last term, I think the town should do its research in terms of finding out what the most efficient way of proceeding with highway maintenance in the town will be in the future. So I would make a motion that we refer to the Personnel Committee, the chore of looking at what it would look like to bring the highway commissioner's job in-house. And by that, I mean, the person would be hired by the Select Board. They would no longer be elected. So that would be my motion.
Okay. Motion's made by JP. Is there a second? Seconded by Aaron. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion to refer this to the Personnel Committee to look into bringing the highway commissioner position eventually in-house? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
I had one other motion, ma'am chairman.
Yep. Go ahead.
Move to adjourn, move to adjourn.
Okay. Hold on for, I won't ask for a second yet. I did want to mention in public session that we had received an inquiry about Evergreen Cemetery, some quick research with Howard Burgess, thank you, Howard, discloses that all of Evergreen Cemetery is in the city of Rutland, so the town does not have any cemetery property within the town. And so I think we have answered that question, and it's a very odd boundary line. You should look it up sometime on the map. Okay, so motion's been made to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made, two seconds. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.